Would like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting of November 19th, 2018. It's good to have everybody with us tonight. We are very happy to have no one here to present the colors tonight. So at this time, I would ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are very happy to have Dr. Tom Kabinus from First Baptist Church of Kannapolis to bring our invocation tonight.
May we pray together. Gracious and faithful God, in these quiet moments, we pause now to honor your greatness and to give thanks for the blessings of this day. The Psalmist wrote that the earth is the Lord's and everything in it. And this evening, we recognize that every blessing, every breath, every gift, and every expression of grace come from you. We ask your blessings this evening upon schools and teachers, law enforcement officers and firefighters, judges, commissioners, public servants, and truly all who keep Cabarrus County safe, strong, and moving forward. We thank you for new residents who bring new energy, new ideas, and vitality. We thank you for longtime residents who offer stability, a sense of history, and embody the best of customs and traditions. We ask now for your wisdom to be with the men and women in this room who serve the people and the greater good of Cabarrus County. May the decisions made here both tonight and always be for the benefit and good of our neighbors around us. May we remember the words of Jesus who said, "That anyone who wants to be first must be the very last and the servant of all." I pray that the leadership of this county will find its strength in you. May these citizen leaders be filled with your counsel, your wisdom, and your understanding, surrounded always by your grace and guidance. May the decisions that are made be balanced with judgment, discernment, and dedication to the common good of all who call this county home. In this season of Thanksgiving, may we remember the words of Christ who said he came not to be served but to serve and to offer his life as a ransom for many. Tonight and always, may those who meet in this room act and serve with the words of the ancient prophet Micah faithfully in mind. And what does the Lord require of us? To act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with the Lord our God. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Tom. We appreciate you being here tonight. Would like to also recognize our youth commissioner that's with us up front tonight, and that's Lance Cagle. Lance, it's good to have you with us. Okay, first up is approval or corrections of the minutes, and you all have copies of those before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes, or do we have any corrections?
May for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to approval of the agenda. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda, including the changes on page 60. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to recognitions and presentations. And we are very happy to have Sheriff Brad Riley and some of his family members with him, a lot of his family members with him, tonight. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to County Manager Mike Downs at this time.
As Commissioner Morris said, we are going to congratulate Sheriff Riley on a job well done, a career well done. And I'm just going to touch a little bit on that, so those in the audience can understand how well the job was done. Sheriff Riley was hired by Sheriff Kennedy in July of 1990 and served as a deputy sheriff until October of 96, where he received a promotion to sergeant. And then again in 1998, he was promoted to lieutenant. And in 2001, he was elected as the sheriff of Cabarrus County and has served the last 17 years approximately as the sheriff of our county. Just to give you some other ideas of what's going on, Brad asked me to read this word for word, so I'm going to read it word for word. He probably wishes that I wouldn't, but I'm going to anyway, because there was a lot. He serves several responsibilities: patrol, criminal investigation, crime scene, vice narcotics, gangs division, civil division, school resource officer, telecommunications, 911, hiring, training division, animal control. He's in the jail, the courthouse security. He served in all those capacities or managed those areas as well. Secondary responsibilities: the bomb squad, the SWAT team, special response to urban research and rescue team, negotiator team, motorcycle team, and the honor guard. And then just some of the awards that Sheriff Riley has won and been recognized over the years. In 1998, he received his Advanced Law Enforcement Officer Certificate. In 2000, he was awarded the Kevin Pugh Veteran Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award. In 2001, Alan Graham Masonic Lodge Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. 2003, the National Sheriff's Institute. He graduated from the institute. In 2004, he was the Employer of the Year, voted on by the Concord-Cabarrus Business and Professional Women's Club. In 2005, he graduated from the FBI Academy. In 2005 as well, he was voted Officer of the Year by the St. John's Grange. In 2006, the Stokes-Masonic Lodge recognized him and awarded him with an Outstanding Service Award. In 2006 as well, he was elected and served as president of the North Carolina Sheriff's Association. In 2007, he was chairman of the Executive Committee of the North Carolina Sheriff's Association. And 2007 as well, president all the way to now, he served as co-chair on the National Sheriff's Homeland Security Committee. He's currently serving on the National Sheriff's Association and is elected to the Board of Directors in 2007. In 2010, Chairman of North Carolina Sheriff's Training and Standards, elected commission and past probable cause committee chairman. In 2014, elected to the Executive Committee of the National Sheriff's Association. In 2015, Glenn Mallory Law Enforcement Executive of the Year for the entire state of North Carolina. And in 2018, just most recently, we were there to help him celebrate this. Concord First Assembly recognized him with their Lifetime Achievement Award. So as you can tell, not only did he serve Cabarrus County, he also served in professional organizations at the state level, at the national level, and he assisted many of the community associations and nonprofits as well. So Sheriff Riley, on behalf of myself and county management and all of our employees, we'd like to congratulate you on well done. Great job, great career. We're going to miss you. And I know I speak on behalf of Ms. Dubois and Mr. Marshall as well, and our esteemed attorney over there, Mr. Cook, as well. So I will pass that back to you, Chair, Mr. Chair, and for your comments as well.
Thank you, sir. That's a pretty impressive list of accomplishments and awards. I don't think I've ever heard one quite that long before, but just wanted to say that it certainly has been a pleasure working with you during the time that I've served on this board. It is a very comfortable feeling to know that you have always been available, and when there was an issue to discuss, and we have sat, and I wouldn't begin to enumerate all the ones that we have talked about, but it's, you know, I always feel so comfortable that you're knowledgeable about what we're talking about, and certainly admire the relationship that you have with the other law enforcement agencies in Cabarrus County. And many of those conversations that we've had were all of us around the table at the same time. So I think you have an excellent man replacing you, but you're still going to be missed, and certainly appreciate what you have done for Cabarrus County, and I think certainly admire that you are able to have this many of your staff that admire you and show up tonight to honor you, and so thank you very much. And if any of the other commissioners would like to comment, please feel free.
I couldn't let this opportunity pass, Sheriff Riley. I was just sitting here thinking, you know, we've been friends a long time, and you're a product of Cabarrus County, a product of Cabarrus County schools. You've been a public servant. You know, of all the accolades that you have, you know, some of the things that was left out, you know, first off, you've been a citizen. You've been a citizen of this county. And I, like you, Chairman, you know, I felt Cabarrus County was safe under your leadership. We don't have the problems with crime. We don't have the problems that other counties have to endure for whatever reason, but your leadership has brought us a long ways. The new Sheriff's Office Detention Center there, you was with us when all of that. Matter of fact, you was at the head of it. And so it's just been something, you know, that we all should be proud of. I'm extremely proud just to call you my friend, Brad. And I hope we're going to be around a while.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Sheriff Riley, thank you very much for your service. I'll be brief. One of the things that I've always was taught and held dear and tried to teach others is always leave something better than you find it. And I don't think there's any doubt, and that's no knock on who came before you, but there's no doubt that you've left this office and this department and this county better than you found it, and all we can say is thank you.
I think Commissioner Honeycutt has a little something for you.
Commissioner, hold on one second, because I want his family to be up there with you. I apologize. Cindy, his wife Cindy, his daughter Brooklyn, and his son David are here as well, and I apologize for not pulling you up here from the beginning, but I wanted you to be there as part of that.
Awesome. So we have for you a clock for your 29 years. No, we have much more than a clock. We have our thanks for what you've done for the citizens, and there's no way to put into words. I don't think I can, you know, do much more than what they've already said, except for to say to you, you are always approachable, always there when we needed you, and that means more than I can say. And after hearing the list of what Mike read out, I don't know what else you would have to do if you stayed on. So it's off on a new journey and a new path, and we wish you the best of luck in that. And as I told Deputy Chief Paul Hunt, you are welcome back anytime. Come stand around at any meeting when you don't have anything else to do. We'd love to see you. How about that? Good deal.
Thank you so much. Excellent.
I'd like to say a few things if I could.
Absolutely.
And I really don't know where to start. I've been thinking about this for a long time, about 29 years. You look forward to this day for so long, and then when it gets here, it's kind of a bittersweet. I remember, you know, just as we were going through all of this, I remembered tonight, which was kind of surreal for me when I was sworn in as the sheriff, and how scared I was and how young I was, and it seemed like it was so long ago. But I had the same feeling, and that is of great pride to, you know, to be in this county, to be so blessed, so blessed to look around the room and see the men and women that come to work hard every day. I didn't think about this part of it, to be quite honest with you. I'm just so humbled. They're the reason I do this. I love every single one of y'all that are here from Sheriff's Office. And I've enjoyed every minute of it. I don't regret one day of coming to work. My family, they have sacrificed so much, and they haven't regretted one minute of it. I remember all the times that, you know, back during the, on the street days and being on the SWAT team, and my kids were very small and work all day, go home, eat, get called out to a call, and my kids would be paging me throughout the night, not recognizing that my pager was in a bag somewhere. But I never forget those things. I always will remember that they cared enough and they worried enough, and we were out there doing what we needed to do to protect and serve. And you guys and gals on the commission have been fantastic. I can't have a better group. I couldn't have asked for a better group of commissioners than the last, since I've been here, really, but this group here has been fantastic. You have concerted an effort to look after the men and women, and that's what it's all about for me. It's never been about me. Being sheriff was, for one thing, and that was to try to lead what I knew already was the greatest organization in this state and in this nation. And honestly, we haven't. We're so blessed. We're so blessed to have you. We're so blessed to have those officers that you don't have to worry about being out there doing things that are not right, that are not of high character. And I just thank you so much. And this was a moment for me to come and publicly say to you, in the county, and to say to those men and women that work every single day and night, every single day, thank you so much.
Thank you. We have quite a few cards tonight, and we have, everybody will have three minutes to speak, and we do have the timer up here to help you with that. So when you come to the microphone, if you would, state your name and address. And first card is Laura Peets.
Commissioners, thank you for your time and for allowing us to speak. I come to give voice to that which has none, our natural environment, and all that dwells there. I beseech you to put in place stricter laws and fierce, painful penalties on those who pay no heed to the destruction and devastation imposed on these our county lands. I'd like to see an open burn ban put in place where you have to have a permit that these piles, these massive piles of trees need to be at least looked upon and see that they can be thrown through chippers, that they don't need to be polluting our environment. We have people in our neighborhood that are very ill and very sick because of the incessant burning that's going on, and it's not necessary. It can be sent through chippers and added back to the forest floor. I'd like to see our water and soil department brought back. We're in the best financial state we've been in in years. That was done away with, I believe, in 2012, and it was passed on to the state. And honestly, it's just too much for the state to handle, and they just don't care about Cabarrus County. Nobody cares about Cabarrus County but the citizens of Cabarrus County. And if we don't step up and make a move and do it quickly, we will have lost our lands and that which we've played in and have loved. And again, I'd like to see heavy, painful fines. Right now, what's happened on Highway 601, that area in Flowstore Road, which part of that land is historic, the Hartzell family has owned it for years, is a complete rape and devastation of the land with no care as to what was destroyed. We have in this county endangered species that live only in this county and grow only in this county. The shweinicer sunflower, it's found nowhere else but in Cabarrus County, and it's on the endangered species list, and when gone, it'll be gone. The Carolina hill splitter as well, they're not to be seen anymore. These are little clams that you find along our creek beds, and our creek beds have been destroyed. The Catawba Land Conservancy and the Farr Mill family had partnered together for clean water management and a trust fund to permanently conserve the land that was the Farr family's off of Mount Pleasant Road. It was to protect clean water, wildlife habitat, and segments of the Carolina Thread Trail, otherwise known as the Blue Way. That thread trail is currently closed, and this is one of the bridges that was concreted into the ground. And this was a newer one that was replaced recently, which is pushed far out of place from where it was. I'm 5'3", nothing, and that water line is about eight more feet over my head. That's how much flooding has taken place. All of this land is in direct contact with the 800 acres of massacre that happened with our new solar fields. I'm all for progress. I'm all for building. I'm all for making our community and this county a better place and a more place for all of us to thrive. But when there's absolutely no regard for our habitat and our county officials really have no, they have no authority at the end of the day. When our zoning officer is allowed to impose first a fine, which has to be signed for, which was sent out on October 23rd and has still not been signed for, after that, they get a $100 fine. I don't work. I can pay a $100 fine. And after that, a $500 fine. This is insanity. If you're down in Pamlico County and you put a shooting range in your yard that wasn't approved, it's a $10,000 fine and then cleanup fees through the EPA. We're not doing anything. We're closing our eyes and we're allowing this destruction to take place. And so I beseech you this evening to, please, don't turn a blind eye to this. Help us save our land. Help us save our environment and help us save our animals, so we have a future, something for our children to see one day and to be able to play as we did. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Daquita Vanderburg Johnson.
Chairman Morris, Vice Chair Honeycutt, Mr. Downs, Mr. Cook, and Honorable Commissioners. I come before you, I'm Daquita Vanderburg Johnson. I live at 7787 U.S. Highway 601 South in Concord. And I come before you this evening to bring your attention to the travesty that is occurring across from the property there on Highway 601 South. 127 acres of beautiful forest land has been decimated by timbering, stumping, and now burning. A few years ago, I owned this land, and members of my family owned this land for a number of years. I actually had CESI conduct a Phase 1 environmental study, and during that time, they found an endangered species frog. Well, I can tell you today, that frog is not there. There isn't a frog there. There is absolutely no wildlife left. They are burning, out of control burning, and the berms that they have filled up. I woke up in the morning in October, and my house was filled with forest fire smoke. It was so thick, I actually went outside to see if I could see flames. Now, I'm fortunate that I don't have a lung issue or a breathing issue, but if I had, I would have been in trouble that day. As a real estate professional, I know the detrimental effect that an unknown project can have on a community. There are no land plans, no erosion control plans, no permitting that I have found and located. I have homes listed in this area, and potential buyer's agents have actually called me and said, "Well, now, what's going on in this part of the county? I know we've got the solar farm, but what is happening there on 601? What's going on?" And for me to have, me, the person who's supposed to have the answers, to have to say, "I have no clue," that hinders the ability for the people in this part of Cabarrus County to be able to sell their houses, because that is an eyesore, and it is of concern to anyone who's looking to be out in that area of Cabarrus County. The communities of Millbridge, Rambling River Estates, Vanderburg Estates, and Maple Bluff are all affected by what's happening at this site. I feel that we should have a better understanding of projects such as this, as well as hearings on something that is of this magnitude. And I feel that there should be full transparency and disclosure when something is going on like this. Is that my time up? I'm an advocate of controlled development and economic development for Cabarrus County. I realize this community is going to grow, and we can't stop growth. However, I don't like that an outside developer can come in and do as he pleases when the developers here in Cabarrus County have to abide by the law. Thank you so much for listening and singing.
Next is Amy Brooks Thomas.
Here's some pictures that I'll be referring to. Thank you, county commissioners, for your time, and thank you especially to Steve Morris for speaking to us. We called on a Friday, and he spoke to us on Monday morning, and I appreciate that very much. I have, I'm a lifelong resident of Cabarrus County. I probably sent something through there. I wasn't supposed to. Is that a sheet of pink paper?
I'm sorry?
Oh, never mind. I thought, I just saw you holding a pink. I didn't mean to send that through there. I mean, yellow. But anyway, I'm a lifelong resident of Cabarrus County, and I'm the third generation of the Lafferty family that lives on Parks Lafferty Road. My land adjoins this 127-acre tract of land, and it's changed, it's changed my life, just because the canopy, the canopy of the trees that have surrounded my land that adjoins there is now, is gone. I have no privacy. But more important than that is that also in that area of that land where the trees have been taken down is that 100-year-old floodplain. And so I have pictures of that, where you'll see there's tremendous amount of flooding at the lower part of my pasture, which that involves the floodplain. And also, right next to, within, I'd say, two feet of my property line, trees have been taken down. I know he has a right to take down the trees, but also a tree that's three to four feet in diameter, and it's two feet away from my property line, and he took it down? You know, I mean, really? You can't leave a tree that's within two feet of my property line? But anyway, so the developer that I know, I don't know him, but he is from Monroe, and he got the land for $400,000. That's about $31.50 per acre. The land involves beautiful rolling hills and some very steep slopes. With him taking all the trees out and just decimating it, you know, there's going to be a lot of erosion. You'll see that in picture number four. To my knowledge, no permits were ever pulled, which Daquita's already mentioned. I heard the bulldozers run for four months, Monday through Friday, out there at 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., trees falling, all the clinging. It was pretty bad. But I'm pretty sick over the trees and what's happened to the wildlife. But most of all, I'm concerned about the flooding of the land around us. What I'd like to see changed is to have some tighter regulations and firmer enforcement of our land, our air quality, and our water, and our wildlife protection. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I have a card for Thomas, but you wanted to defer. Okay. Eleanor Zalum.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Board of Commissioners of Cabarrus County. My name is Eleanor Zalum. I've been a resident of Cabarrus County 15 years this coming January. Thank you for this opportunity to speak publicly and express the concerns I have regarding the property at 7570 Highway 601 South and adjoining properties which are at risk for the same demise. I am concerned that Cabarrus County does not have adequate measures I am concerned that Cabarrus County does not have adequate measures in place with our current ordinances and laws to preserve the natural resources and quality of life that generations of Cabarrus County residents, as well as, as well as those like myself who have left areas of high-density living and pollution for a better existence and life in joy. With county fines ranging from only $100 to $500 maximum, what incentive are there for, is there for a developer to comply with the law? Fines need to be substantial, effective punishment, and proportionate to the infractions incurred. $10,000 for first violations, doubled for each additional violation and/or repeated violations, as there is no repeat offense clause in place. A small sidewalk sign violation in downtown Concord where I had a small store a few years ago. A sidewalk sign is a $100 per day fine, but a developer can massacre an entire forest without a plan submitted to the county stating intent, without a plan submitted to the county stating intentions of use of the land, not put any, not put in any required soil erosions, ruin waterways and creeks, disrupt wildlife, destroy habitat, enter floodplains and floodways, burn residential wood remains day and night, 24 hours a day for weeks, and the biggest consequence is a $100 to $500 fine? The trees are our only source of oxygen on this planet in our county. They are a natural free source of erosion and flood control. The underbrush and ground covering of the forest floors are as well. Trees provide temperature regulation and cool our planet by absorbing carbon dioxide through photosynthesis, by evaporating water into the air. They filter our air by removing pollutants and give us clean air to breathe. They provide, they provide sound absorption from the Speedway and traffic on 601. They create a habitat for a multitude of God's creatures, ranging from the crawling to the birds of all kinds, owls, hawks, falcons, eagles, to the mammals, raccoons, rabbits, deers, and coyotes, which are showing up more and more in yards of nearby neighborhoods since this destruction has taken place, to the frogs, turtles, and fish, which depend on the trees to support the embankments along the creek streams and ultimately the rivers such as Rocky River. Nobody here wants another 600 to 800 acres of forest sacrificed for a solar field development or cheap, high-density housing like Fox Creek at subdivision in Midland. Any future home sites and development outside the city limits of Concord should be constructed to reflect the character of the countryside landscape. For example, having a requirement of one acre minimum acre lots with healthy and larger trees left undisturbed in areas not endangering the building or homes themselves. We need to roll back the zoning along 601 corridor, back to agricultural countryside residential, and not allow the greed of a handful of already very wealthy developers and investors to ruin our quality of life outside the city limits of Concord by negatively impacting home values, by ruining the landscape, increasing flooding and soil erosion, causing increased silt in our waterways, destroying forests which give us so many benefits and creating decreased air quality. These developers don't play by the rules. They ignored notices of violations served to them from the county by not signing the registered receipt letter sent. They have no respect for surrounding residents who live here, for some, some for generations. They do not regard any authority of Cabarrus County, including those of you on the board, as this is evident in their disregard for our county ordinances, rules, and regulations. They're proceeding without plans being submitted to our county zoning and planning department or the North Carolina Department of Forestry or the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. They are plowing, burning, bulldozing their way ahead without constraint because they can. I implore the board to please regard, to please guard the undeveloped lands of Cabarrus County with greater fines and penalties and create purposeful planning that can make Cabarrus County the All-America county. Like Concord was awarded with the All-America City Award from the National Civic League, it would be a noble pursuit of the county to strive for an All-America Cabarrus County where natural resources and landscapes that have been here for hundreds of years be managed respectfully with purposeful plans and designs, not only residential but commercial and industrial development, and including areas of natural habitat and landscape prior to the initiation of logging any land. And in this way, our county can demonstrate responsible stewardship of natural resources which other North Carolina counties and beyond will aspire to model after. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, next is David Alder.
Thank you for your time. My name is David Alder, and I live on the Rambling River Estates. We've been there for 17 years. Our property adjoins the Rocky River itself, and I would just want to bring to notice that we have, in the 17 years I've lived here, have noticed a big change in the environment around the river. Since August, I have noticed that the river has stayed a murky brown the whole rest of the year. And I've also have noticed during the breeding season, we have the snapping turtles, and they come up. I have a really big sandy beach area where the river turns on my property, and the turtles come up and they lay their eggs. And I'm down, I walk out there quite a bit during the weeks. I'm retired now. And I noticed when I've been out there this year that four or five egg nests have all I've seen this year. In the previous years, I've seen twice, three times as many egg nests that have been laid and robbed, either by the blue herring or by the raccoons, by the tracks I see. When we take the turtle eggs away, we take away our blue herring, we take away our raccoons. I've noticed in the murkiness of the water, I do not see anymore of the little minnows that use to swim along the shoreline. I've also noticed that these hill splitters that they're talking about, when I first moved here, I used to see their clam shells everywhere on my sandy beach. And this year, I've noticed none of them. And I have probably two football field lengths of property that runs right along the edge of the river, and I have not seen any of these clams that the people are talking about. I believe that the water is being depleted from the air, the air is being depleted from the water, I'm sorry, due to this murkiness in the water, and therefore our, our stream life animals are all leaving. I believe the solution could be controlled by catch basins while they're developing these lands, basins that will retain large amounts of water that the soot could run into. And then as it overflows, the clean water would run on out. But the way this property is, where they're, is going on, it is just straight, fresh, raw dirt running into the river. And I believe the responsibility of the builders should exume the cost of bringing back our river streams the way that they were before they moved in. I'm in between the 601 construction site and the water treatment plant, there's a big neighborhood going in up there. And I believe both of them running into the river is what I'm seeing through my backyard as the brown murky water. And I believe these construction companies should be responsible for restoration of the damage of our wildlife. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Joyce Alder.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I live with him. We're on Aaron Brook Drive, at the end of Aaron Brook Drive, Rambling River Estates. We have seven acres, a lot of riverfront property, and we have for 17 years watched it go downhill. We, approximately three years ago, FEMA updated their flood map plans. I now have to pay for flood insurance. Seems to me that nobody is maintaining the rivers, the waterways. Go ahead, let's build, oh, let's just all dump it in the river. You know, it's just, trees fall in it, the sides of the embankments are falling in, the silt, the endangered species, the hill splitter, we don't see anymore. Those have to survive in clean, fresh water, not silty water. That's probably why you don't have them anymore. But it just seems that the responsibility of anybody building around the Rocky River in any of the areas that are not just my neighborhood, but it seems to me that they're just not taking care of it environmentally. And I believe it's up to our county to say, "Hey, if you're gonna do this, you know, you're gonna have to build another road, and you're gonna have to build a second lane over here because you're gonna cause traffic." And, well, hey, let's think about the rivers too, which bring in the animals, the deer, the turkeys. All of these animals are suffering at this point. We don't see the wildlife that we used to see. All we see and hear now is coyote. That's even getting worse. The erosion and the runoff from the building, there's another phase of bostwood just above us going on at this point. I don't know, you know, how much worse it's gonna get. But I get flooded more and more often. The bridge that's on Park Lafferty, they built it up and rebuilt the bridge, but it's getting flooded just as frequently now. It doesn't matter that they put a new bridge and raised it six to eight inches. I used to be able to tell from my backyard, if it was over my back fence post, that's how bad it floods, yes. Over my back fence post, then Parks Lafferty was closed because it's flooded. Now it doesn't even have to get to my gates on the ground. Parks Lafferty Bridge is flooded and closed. That may be perhaps because of what's going on on 601. I'm not sure if it's backing silt and mud up into there. But that's what's been going on, and we're all very, very concerned. Some of the solutions, I believe, is land clearing. Owners should be responsible to clean up the riverways, not just dumping it. Permits to be highly monitored and enforced. Increasing fines. Some of the fines, like everybody's talking about, are, we think, a joke. Silt fencing, state and county offices need to become accountable. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is Patricia Day.
Thank you. I'm a fairly, my husband and I are fairly new residents to this area, Maple Bluff neighborhood. Last two years, very lovely. I have asthma coming home at times. We had to use our brights because the burning, the smoke from the burning was incredibly thick, which I believe is against the open burning policy of your municipal code, and that came from the 601 development that everyone's been sharing with you today. I feel like the developers in this situation have been taking their freedom without responsibility, and that it is time for government, government to take a look at what's going on and to force them into some remediations for the damage they've already done without permission from our county. As a biologist and a master gardener, I'm appalled at the destruction of this lovely There was nothing left, and I just want to share my grief with you for the loss of the natural area and other areas that are being taken without due process, as anyone with large parcels of land should take. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more card, but I think it's on a different topic. As Ms. Thomas mentioned earlier, we had, have met and had some conversations about this. Typically, we do not respond to public comments. We just gather information. But because of the awareness of this, I've asked Deputy County Manager Jonathan Marshall just to kind of update all of us on exactly the status of what's going on there.
Thank you. And these will be an overview. I would be more than happy, as some of you already contacted me, I know you have my contact information on the back of the flyer that's gone around, please reach out to me, and I'd be glad to go into more specifics on any of this. I guess first and foremost, we share their concern with what's happened in the area. Obviously, we have our own regulations that we're enforcing, and along with that, we're working with the State Department of Environmental Quality, as well as the Forestry Service to do dual enforcement on this. As late as this afternoon, I was on the phone with Zahid Khan, who is the Land Quality Manager with DEQ. That's Department of Environmental Quality in Mooresville. Zahid had intended to come tonight, but I told him I would send him the link to this meeting since it is taped, so he could hear all these comments verbatim rather than them relying on me to pass on exactly what they said. He'll be able to see and watch and get all these comments directly. It is important to note, this is not a popular thing to say, but timbering and forestry are an exempt activity. It's, in North Carolina, as a Dillon's Rule state, we are told by the state what we can enforce locally and what is enforced statewide. And timbering and forestry are a statewide enforcement issue. And so many of these issues, I feel, should be passed along to our state representatives so that they also hear the concern with, with some of these activities and the lack of rules to, in place for them. The county is able to enforce floodplain regulation as well as stream buffering standards, and that's what our citations have gone out for. There's a concern that the property owner has not signed for the registered letter, but the standard mail letter has gone through, and we've also been in contact by email. So we are aware that the property owner, as well as his representatives, know of the violations and the need to correct them. The same way with the state. The state has actually met on-site with the representative of the property owner. He has responded, the property owner has, by indicating that his intention was to log and timber the property as he's done, and then to convert this into agricultural use. And by doing that, there really is no role at this point for forestry, although there could be in the future, depending on what we discover. The remedies are fairly common between both of us. Our first priority at this point, we can't make, put the trees back, we can't restore those buffers exactly the way they were, but our first priority is stabilization of the property. You've heard and seen the pictures, we've seen other pictures, our own staff has been on the site. There has been a great deal of damage to the streams, and the stream buffers need to be restored. But in order to do all that, the property needs to be stabilized to start holding that sediment on-site. And the damage off-site needs to be remediated because that sediment has gone off-site. Again, the property owners indicated this is going into agriculture, that is another exempt activity. But the key to that is getting back to stabilizing the land. So our remedies are the stabilization, restoration of the buffer, restoration of the damage in the floodplain. Those remedies are shared by the Department of Environmental Quality, and they will also enforce the off-site damage that's been done. A number of the other issues that have come up deal with utilities. There are no plans at this point for sewer utility in this area. It is a difficult area to sewer. County land use plans do not support the extension of public sewer to this area. So I know there's concerns about residential, high-density residential development. That is not possible without major changes for both utility extension and changes in our zoning. There's also been concerns, some of our zoning surrounding the Concord Motorsports Park is non-residential, and there's been concern expressed about having that rezoned back to residential. Most of our, in fact, almost all of our zoning in that area that falls under the county is countryside residential, which requires a two-acre minimum lot size, or agricultural open, which is a three-acre minimum lot size. And those certainly may be more, or would be more appropriate based on what we've heard for residents' wishes for the area. So we'd be happy to discuss with them how we go about the process of reconsidering some of that zoning. I will note that there is zoning just to the south of this. The Motorsports Park itself is in the town of Midland, so that does not fall under our zoning jurisdiction.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate those updates. And we have one more card from Bishop Roland Jordan.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Good to see our lawyer in good spirit. Citizen, friends and enemies. So we just thank God for this day. One thing I'm gonna talk about was, uh, our court system, praise God. There's rumors going that we need a new courthouse. No, we don't need no new courthouse, you need to expand it. What they're doing at court is ridiculous, how people stand there all day. You got people there looking for a lawyer and stuff. In the old time away, they used to speed it up, get the ones who not playing, not guilty. The ones who play guilty, they get them out of there quick. They need to go back to the old way, 'cause it worked. The way they're doing now is not working. Okay, maybe in the near future, but we got homeless people out here that need to be helped. I walk the street different hours, see them laying up there in the courthouse. Cabarrus County, we should be better than this. We got the resource to get them people in a place to stay, regardless of their criminal background. You put some guards in there, volunteer people, to help them people, them guard people. I'm concerned about that. Okay? Our kids, I'm concerned about our kids. Even though I've been cruising kids, but let me tell you something about me. I'm a warrior, I'm a Christian man, and I have Satan in me, which that is the enemy in me. That's flush. I overcome that by prayer. When there's time for peace, I'm peace; when there's time for war, I'm at war. When there's time for love, I'm at love; when there's time for hate, I'm at hate. That's who I am, a human being. And my job is to help people, our senior citizens, our direction all, and our school. I do believe, some of our teachers qualified, sure, carry a gun. Due to the fact, if I was a teacher, and someone hurt my kids, I'm gonna get them where they get my kids. Simple as that. We need metal detectors at them schools. You take prayer out, I'm working to get prayer back in. All this thing go on until we took prayer out, let the devil take a charge. We afraid of the devil? Y'all may be, I'm not. Okay? It's time to speak up, praise God. And I want to thank you for all you voted for, Ms. Monita Boger, Allen, our first judge, way too overdue. We had other qualified candidates, but the Republican outnumbered the Democrats. But we're gonna miss a good sheriff. Sheriff Shaw got to talk to him, to me, he's a Christian. I'm not in part of the jury, we'll test and see. There is gonna need some changes in the jailhouse. Treat them people like they're people. Treat freedom right, you know? 'Cause if I was locked up, I want you to treat me right in there. If y'all were locked up, be the same thing. I'm not above going to jail, because I said I got the flush in me, but I obey the law. And the town of Midland, they need water and sewers in, in Midland. We got the resource that can get that done, and I know that can be done. Thank you for your time, and God bless you.
Thank you.[808.17][808.17][applause] Okay, that is all the public comment cards that we have tonight. And so we now move to our consent agenda, which consists of items that we have previously discussed during our work session, and you all have that before you do. I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to new business. First item is an economic development investment for Project Goodman, and we are happy to have Robert Carney and Samantha Grass here to talk with us about that.
Good evening. Samantha Grass, Recruitment Project Manager with Cabarrus Economic Development. Thank you for the opportunity to present both Project Goodman and Project Jersey Hydro to you this evening. SL Goodman Road LLC, the Silverman Group, is considering constructing an industrial spec building on Goodman Road in the area of 431 Goodman Road Concord. The industrial building will be available for lease and will be 600,000 square feet. They are projecting an investment of approximately 20 million in real property. Their investment exceeds the minimum requirements of the Economic Development Grant. The Cabarrus County Grant Analysis is based on that estimated 20 million in projected investment for real property. We are asking for your consideration of a three-year, 85% economic development grant. The estimated grant for that three-year term is $367,200. During that same grant term, the county would net over 64,000. Effective payment of the industrial spec building grant is dependent on the occupancy of a primary manufacturing tenant as its first tenant, or at the discretion of the county Board of Commissioners, if the tenant creates new jobs with higher wages than the average wage in Cabarrus County. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, questions for Samantha? Thank you. This does call for a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this matter. And that is for Project Goodman. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner, what would be your pleasure on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Economic Development Speculative Industrial Agreement, three years, 85%, between Project Goodman and Cabarrus County, and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to the review or revision by our county attorney.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to item two, another economic development, Project Jersey Hydro.
Thank you for the support of Project Goodman. The second one tonight is Project Jersey Hydro. Hydrimer Incorporated is considering relocating operations to Concord. They manufacture polymer-based products for commercial use in the medical, industrial, cosmetic, and animal health markets. They are considering leasing approximately 20,000 square foot of space at 4715 Corporate Drive, Suite 200, located in the International Business Park. The space is currently in shell condition, so they would be upfitting that space. The projected investment is estimated to be between 1 and 2 million in real and personal property. Their plans do also include job creation, 33 new jobs, a few of those would-be transfers from their operation up north. Their average wage is 70,000, and that exceeds our county average wage. The Cabarrus County Grant Analysis is based on the estimate of 1 to 2 million projected investment. We are asking for your consideration of a five-year, 85% economic development grant. The estimated grant for that five-year term is between 30,600 and 61,200. And again, be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this matter also calls for a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this project. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this item?
I will make a motion to approve an economic development agreement, five years, 85%, between Project Jersey Hydro and Cabarrus County, and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to revision and review by the county attorney.
Okay, do I hear a second to that motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a comment in reference to this particular economic grant, and that is, one of the things that's impressive to me is the, the average wage that they're projecting. You know, we're looking at almost 70, well, 70,000, wherein that's almost double to what the Cabarrus County median wage is. And I think that was one of the driving factors, because this is a smaller, a smaller project than what we normally deal with. But I think that was one of the driving factors, was that the average wage was 77,000 with 33 full-time jobs. So that's gonna add to our economy and overall economic development, so I just wanted to break back everybody's attention.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? You know, as I've mentioned before, we quite frequently, we're very, very fortunate to have a number of these projects to consider, and when we don't ask a lot of questions about them, it's because we've already done our homework and studied them for quite some time. So we have had quite a bit of discussion about both of these projects. Yes, ma'am?
Morris, I think they wanted me to, again, state the company name. It is Project Jersey Hydro is the codename, but the company name is Hydrimer Incorporated. So I wanted to, again, share that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to item number three, from the Sheriff's Department, North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program Local Government Resolution, and we are glad to have Lieutenant Aaron Rankin with us to talk about that.
Yes, good evening Commissioners and County Manager, and thank you for the recognition for Sheriff Riley. He will definitely be missed. He hired me. We started not too long after each other, so it's been an honor to work for him. And I appreciate you taking the time. This is a continuation of last year's grant. It's a smaller amount, because it's our second year, but it is the responsibility of our agency, we've been recognized for our work with the Bike Safe Program, which is a motorcycle safety program that we offer free to anybody that wants to come in and take the class to promote safe riding and good training when you're out on the roads on the motorcycles. And our county was recognized for that. We are now in the metro district, and our county manages Cabarrus, Mecklenburg, Iredale, Rowan, Union, Anson, Stanley, Montgomery, and more. So there was 400, just over 400 people who took the class in North Carolina this year, and 40 of them came just through Cabarrus County alone. So this is a continuation of that grant, which funds training for us, also allows us to go to conferences to promote this and learn from other places of how to offer this class for safe motorcycle riding.
Okay, very good. Any questions, Commissioners? Sounds like an excellent program. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution and attach budget amendment on this North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program.
Does I move?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We move now to item number four, from Risk Management, and we're glad to have Tom Nun with us.
Good evening Commissioners. An application for a $25,000 public official bond for Sheriff-elect Van Shaw was completed and submitted to the county's insurance broker in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 162, Paragraph 8 through 12. The bond has been fulfilled and is in need of board approval for the public official bond process to be completed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do, any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve this public official bond?
I'll move for approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve a public official bond in the amount of $25,000 for Sheriff-elect Van Shaw pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 162.8-12. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to item number five. And this is a resolution amending the Board of Commissioners 2018 meeting schedule, and if I remember correctly, that just adds our quarterly summit meeting.
Changed location, so.
Yes, we changed the location. It was already scheduled, so it was scheduled for Cabarrus Arena and Event Center, but now it will be held on, it, oh, we're changing it to the arena. Okay, we did have it scheduled for Kanapa City Hall, and we are moving it to the Arena and Event Center on December 12, 2018. And, so do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution making that change?
Does that move?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to appointments to boards and committees. First up is the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Ann Holland and Mary Ann Kasempour have resigned from their positions on the Adult Home Care Community Advisory Committee. It is requested to remove their names from the roster. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove Mary Ann Kasempour and Ann Holland from the Adult Home Care Community Advisory Committee roster and thank them for their service.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Linda Barnhart's term on the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee ended on October 31, 2018. She has served on this committee since 2011. And so I would entertain a motion to remove Linda Barnhart from the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee roster and thank her for her service.
Does that move?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to Community, Cabarrus County Youth Commission. The following youth commissioners need to be removed from the Cabarrus County Youth Commission roster due to high school graduation. Jasmine Luter from AL Brown High School, Devon Mullins from Concord High School, Napur Parikh from Early College High School, Lauren Martin from Hickory Ridge High School. Additionally, Mariah Sidney Steele has not met the attendance requirement set forth in the bylaws. The 2018-2019 Cabarrus Youth Commission has been very active and recommends the following students to be appointed for two-year terms. A letter in regards to the youth commissioner's recommendation is included in the agenda. Those recommendations are Bellamy Canoe from Early College High School, Luke Linkle from Northwest Cabarrus High School, Sarah Houston from the Early College High School, Kason Gardner, which would be a reappointment. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove the following members from the Cabarrus County Youth Commission roster and thank them for their service. Jasmine Luter, Devon Mullis, Napur Parikh, Lauren Martin, and Mariah Sidney Steele.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Kason Gardner at Large to the Cabarrus County Youth Commission for a two-year term ending June 30, 2020. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. I would also entertain a motion to appoint Bellamy Canoe from the Early College High School, Luke Linkle from Northwest Cabarrus High School, and Sarah Houston from the Early High School to the Cabarrus County Youth Commission for two-year terms ending June 30, 2020.
Does that move?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions Community Oversight Board. Betty Bab has resigned from her position on the Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions Community Oversight Board. She has served on this board since 2014. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove Betty Bab from the Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions Community Oversight Board and thank her for her service.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I will say that I have served on that board with Ms. Bab, and she's done an excellent job, has been there for quite a while. job, has been there for quite a while. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would further entertain a motion to appoint Paula Yoast to the Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions Community Oversight Board to complete an unexpired term ending July 31, 2020.
I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And the final one is the Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board. Kenny Long has resigned from his position on the Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board. It is requested to remove his name from the roster. He has served on this board since 2013. An application has been received from Matthew Stein. The Harrisburg Fire Chief has requested Mr. Stein be appointed to complete Mr. Long's unexpired term. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Kenny Long to the Harrisburg Fire Advisory to, excuse me, a motion to remove Kenny Long from the Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board and thank him for his service.
Does that move?
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Would entertain a motion to appoint Matthew Stein to the Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board to complete an unexpired term ending July 1, 2019.
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to reports. To receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or various boards and committees, does anyone have anything they would like to report tonight?
I would just, I guess, as the liaison to Concord City Council, want to mention what a great night, Friday night, was with the tree lighting. The event seems to be getting bigger and bigger, and there were a lot of families walking around, and it was a lot of fun. So if you missed it, make sure you come next year. And if you were there, thanks for coming and supporting it.
Right, absolutely. It was very nice, very nice event. Anything else? And I did mention earlier that we have one of our youth commissioners with us tonight, Lance Cagle. Did you have anything you wanted to say? Okay, very good. Wanted to give you that chance. Any other reports anybody would like to bring before the board? General comments? Okay, we do not have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Does that move?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And we stand adjourned. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving to all of our television audience.